On unfinished business, we had to have an approval of some minutes for the regular meeting on June 16th, 2020. Emily?
Yes, Ms. Colors and I had discussed the proposed amendments and we both came to agreement. They are highlighted in your packet. And there was also an additional change. I changed the language from property owner to resident along the river.
And I am fine with those improvements. So I make a motion that we approve the amendments as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
I appreciate that, folks. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Z 2019-11-01, Ordinance to amend or reordain County Code Sections 108, 180-8, 180-10, and 180-40.1 regarding the use, parking, and storage of major recreational vehicles and equipment. Mr. Petty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed text amendment that you see in front of you is still the same text that we've seen at the public hearing level and that we also discussed at the workshop session, excuse me. It cleans up our existing code language to make it a little easier for us to enforce inoperable major recreational equipment on properties, similar to that of inoperable vehicles on properties. If you have any further questions about the text, I would be happy to answer those.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Petty, I've got one. I see that, you know, I see that you're changing some of the ordinances. You're cleaning this up. Who's actually going to verify that things are done and things that are, you're changing are actually happening to make a betterment for our community?
So as a zoning administrator and officer, we operate typically on a complaint basis. When people call and make complaints about inoperable vehicles, trash and debris, I would say those are our primary, largest ones. We do get calls about inoperable boats, we'll just say junk boats, campers that are parked on property. Currently, our code does not have any enforcement over that, similar to that as an inoperable vehicle. So we are, you know, residents are stuck looking at that. We felt that, you know, given we already had code for the vehicles, it should mirror that as a recreational vehicle. They're very similar and/or boats, or trailers, things that are inoperable, basically that are junk. So as the enforcement officer of that, if we receive a call, we will investigate it and we will deal with it on a case by case. Again, it's typically complaint-based unless it is a blatant violation that just cannot be ignored. So it would be the duty of myself or any zoning officer or administrator in the future to have to enforce that. Again, I think it's because we have received complaints for this specific issue that we have addressed it. And we vetted it multiple times through the planning commission level to make sure that it was still reasonable for property owners within the county. And we feel that this text amendment is appropriate.
Okay. If Mr. Smith gets a complaint issued by anybody that says he's got a junk car and a refrigerator in his front yard, and he don't like it, okay, are you going to go out and issue him a citation? Are you, I mean, do you have that authority?
Yes, sir. We have the authority. So if we receive a complaint, it is the code to state that we will investigate within a certain amount of time. And then we have, we will verify the violation. We verify that violation from either the public right-of-way or an adjoining property owner, if the adjoining property owner who made the complaint allows us to come on their property to view the alleged violation. If the alleged violation is confirmed, we have to send a notice of violation that is specific to the state code and how we write that. And typically, they have 30 days to appeal our decision, or they have 30 days to comply with the Warren County Code that has been approved. If they don't comply, the county code and the state code allows us to take further enforcement proceedings that can ultimately go to court, that can lead to fines or abatement of the issue. So yes, sir, if I receive a complaint and I do see that it is a violation, we will notify that property owner. And it is the property owner, if it is a renter or tenant, we still go after the property owner on record.
Okay. I'm just trying to help me think through my process here. Beth has got, has got a ratty car and she's got a refrigerator in her front yard. She and I don't get along. I say, Joe, go out there and do something about it. Okay, just because I'm mad at Beth, I want to know why you're not looking at other people that's got six cars in their driveway and they're looking, and they've got four refrigerators in their front yard. But because I don't have an aggravation with them, they're getting by with something. It looks like to me that we're trying to add more regulations to something that should exist anyway. It's common sense. I should tell Beth, what are you going to do about your junk car and your refrigerator in your front yard? And if you can't, and if I can't get along with Beth, then I could come to you. Then it becomes an issue that you've got to deal with. But I'm not trying to, I don't, it's not that I don't want to do this. It's, I want to do what's right and I would like people to communicate back and forth. Just because I'm mad at Beth doesn't mean that she's wrong.
And I understand, it is traditional, I would say, for localities in Virginia from my interaction with other zoning officials, that most are operating on a complaint base. There are not, unless you're more of a dense or smaller area, it's, you're less likely to be what's considered a proactive zoning enforcement. And typically, that's because of staff resources to be able to enforce every single property in the county. And I under, like, I would say most of the time it is we come into play because it's a neighbor dispute. And I'm sure that there are times where I've heard that the neighbors have tried to work it out, but essentially, it comes down to we have a code and they call us at the zoning office. And I think that's, if you talk to any zoning officer, they probably have the same conversation with, it's, you know, we typically will step in when it's a neighborly dispute.
So our government here is solving problems between two people?
I think zoning's in place essentially because, you know, we want to protect the welfare, safety, and, you know, essentially even aesthetics of a community, of the betterment. You know, these codes are created to do that. Floodplain ordinances, setbacks for houses, and now we're talking about accessory uses such as inoperable motor vehicles, trash and debris from whether construction or just garbage. You know, these things do protect the health and welfare of our community. You know, we get complaints about people who have multiple inoperable vehicles in a residential neighborhood. Maybe these are on quarter-acre lots. They're concerned that they're attracting rodents, you know, things of that nature. Where we will step in, or abandoned dwellings, we get that call a lot, you know, these things that are clearly not aesthetic, but maybe even a safety concern to the neighborhood. That's where we will step in and try and correct that issue. Again, we aren't clearly just saying you can't have any. We do allow for one inoperable vehicle and to be stored outdoors. You can have as many as you want indoors. And typically, they have to be visible from the public right-of-way. You know, the saying is fences make good neighbors. If you can't see it, then it's typically not an issue. But we do get a lot of complaints from people just driving by and they see these concerns and, you know, it comes down to, it's affecting my property values. I'm trying to sell my home. Or, you know, we want to make this a beautiful community for other people to live here and this property owner just doesn't care. That's where the zoning comes in to make it a more attractive community, a safe community, and a vibrant and, you know, economic community that it's not disturbing property values, but we're also respectful of people's property rights.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Beth, I don't know about your home, but I bet you a nickel it looks better than...
No refrigerator.
No refrigerator. Okay. Thank you very much. I didn't mean to pick on you.
I have a question for him, if you will.
Yes, sir.
And how about on your conditional use permits for the automotive industries? Is that something that you take a look at periodically?
Yes, sir. So any conditional use permit can be reviewed annually. We try and review them all annually, checking in, especially the commercial garage repair. Most of those, especially the ones that are tied to a dwelling, they will have a condition that limits how many inoperable vehicles they can store on the property at once. And typically, it's dictated by the space that they have. If they physically don't have space for 20 inops, then we're not going to allow it. But if they do, then we can accommodate that. We will check in with them annually to make sure that there's, you know, they're not exceeding that. They're not storing a lot of tires or, you know, oil or chemicals. So we do monitor our commercial garages without, within the county. We do have a few of those, but they're all, as you stated, they're conditional use permits. So each one has specific conditions per parcel.
And don't some of the conditional use permits limit, give a, set a limit on the amount of inoperable?
Correct. Yes, some, some are as low as three and some can be as many as 10. It depends, like I said, on each property and, you know, where it may be located.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Do I have a motion?
I'm gonna, I'd like to say this before. There's, there's a certain part of me that does not like to tell people what they can and can't do and have on their property. On the other hand, when you have derelict buildings that are a safety issue to the neighborhood, and I know of a few, that I think you have to find a middle of the road. And as long as this doesn't get abused to, you know, then I think it does serve a purpose when you do have places where children can get into buildings that are not secured. And if you don't have something like this, that gives you an opportunity to, to take care of those issues. So for that reason, finding that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is appropriate for the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare and good zoning practice, I move that the board of supervisors approve the proposed amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Shiroki, could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. Next item of business is the consent agenda. There are, there are, are there any items that need to be pulled or further discussed?
I just have, like to have one, if you will, maybe quick cover it. Number two, additional appropriations requests of Warren County Public Schools.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of item number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Could I get a roll call, please, Mrs. Shiroki?
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Looking at number two. That's the request for an additional appropriations of $185,093 from the carryover funds for Warren County Public Schools. Mr. Daley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Title I and Title IV money in the amount of $185,093 from prior year funds. And it would be carried over to be used this year as part of their technology program for distance learning. And the superintendent is, is here if you have questions, sir.
Is the superintendent here?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Could you come up, in case there are questions? How are you?
I'm great.
Appreciate you coming on board with us.
Glad to be a part.
So if I've, I've read articles, this is to cover, what was it, kindergarten and first grade?
This is additional request. These are carryover funds. These are federal dollars. So these are only flow-through dollars. So these were dollars that through the coronavirus act that they gave us leniency, only with the 19, 20 school year funds, that we could reallocate and use them in additional ways to help us with our purchasing of technology that we need to have in place for our virtual learning. And so we're just reallocating those additional federal funds. It's no cost to the county. It's just flow-through.
Right.
And so that is the request for the additional appropriations.
So it's actual federal money coming to us rather than taxpayers' money?
That is correct. That is just federal, that we receive through the federal government.
Okay. That's all I was interested in.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion on item number two, the additional appropriations of $185,093 from the carryover funds?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board of supervisors approve the additional appropriation to the Warren County Public Schools in the amount of $185,093 for the fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. Next item on our agenda is the sub-allocation of second round funds for the Corona virus aid relief and economic security. Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Chairman, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I want to confirm we did have a typo on one of the agenda items. You should be looking at version two. If you flip that over, you'll see my signature, today's date, and a V2. And that is the current, current form. So just to recap, on the 12th of August, as Mr. Munch briefed us, we did receive the second round 3.5 million. So we have the money in the bank. We just appropriated that money this evening. And now we need to do a couple of things tonight to finish it off. First of all, we want to allocate that second round 3.5 million between the county and the town. And then we also want to sub-allocate the county's portion of that money. If I could get you to turn your page there to the chart, it's the second round, August 12th, 2020, version 12 chart. And I'll just walk you through this very quickly, sir.
It's the one, the copy you received tonight, not the copy in your book.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's got the version two on it. Understood.
Two down here.
So from the chart, the second round 3.5 million dollars, what we propose is taking $300,000 off the top for the school system request for their 900 devices for the pre-K, K, and special needs programs. The town, interim town manager is supportive of taking the $300,000 off the top. That leaves us with a balance of 3.2. We would equitably distribute that between the town and the county as we have in the past, using 15,000 residents out of 40,000, or 37 and a half percent for the town, and 25,000 out of 40,000, or 62 and a half percent for the county. When we apply that math, the town would get the 1.2 and we would get just a little over 2 million. So that would be the, the allocation between the county and the town. Again, with the 300,000 off the top for the schools. And then we would sub-allocate, as we have in the past, with our county sub-allocation, it would still be 50% to small business and nonprofits for the 1 million and change. We would leave 40% going to, to the county with the first responder salary, as we have in the past. That would be just over 800,000. And then the final 10%, as we did in round one, would go to the chamber vetted by DSS for utility grants for essential services to event individual account holders. And that's just a little over $200,000. So very similar to how we did round one. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any, Mr. Farrell. Anybody else have any? Mr. Fox?
Perhaps one. And how, how would the distribution be made? On percentage of, how would, how would that work? How would they, what would determine? You know, you've got a million dollars there. And how would it be distributed?
For the, for the business portion or the town?
The business portion.
So the business portion, we would follow a model very similar to the count where we have the B-pole breakdown that the commissioner of revenue provided us. We start with 15,000 is the minimum, and we go up to 2 million is the maximum. And then there's a breakdown in between there. And I think you had that chart in the last round.
Okay.
We estimate about 40% of the businesses, if every business in those categories applied, that we could help. Right now, the town and their, the town has, they're up to about 700,000 out of the million. So the, the numbers are pretty close because we mirror the town.
Okay.
Pretty close.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And this go-round, we're allocating some for the nonprofits. Just wanted to make sure that we're, we're doing that this time and everybody's aware, because they have been hit as well. And we want to make sure that they are allowed to apply if they lost money. So, okay.
Yep.
I don't have any more questions.
Do we have a timeline when people can start applying for these?
So as soon as we finish, we'll have to build our website and our application. We'll have to appoint, as Mr. Daley briefed before, a few members, one board member, someone from the EDA and the chamber, to look at these packages. We'll do that at the next meeting, would be my recommendation. So I'll draft that for you. And then by then, we should have the website pretty close to be able to open up and advertise. So the month of September is what we would be looking at, is advertising and getting folks' applications.
And we feel confident, starting in September, we can meet as many people's needs and still meet that deadline of December?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The town just closed their round one. So it was, they had a two-week window and it was pretty successful.
Good. We hope to be as successful.
Thank you. Oh goodness, that's a long one.
Do you want us to read this whole thing?
Yes.
Can it be read?
I'll do it. It's okay.
Okay. You don't mind doing it?
It's late, folks. So if I stumble over this, I give you my apologies ahead of time.
She did learn to read, though.
Yes, I did. I move the board of supervisors of Warren County appropriate the county's $3,504,154 total allocation of CARES Act money, CARES Act funding as follows. $300,000 to Warren County Public Schools for 900 devices to enable COVID-19-related virtual instruction. $1,201,558 to the town of Front Royal for COVID-19-related necessary expenditures. $2,2,596 to Warren County for COVID-19-related necessary expenditures as follows. $1,1,298, 50% to the Chamber of Commerce, the chamber. $801,038, 40% to pay for the, a portion of the costs incurred by the county for the compensation of first responders during the period from July 1, 2020 through December 30th of 2020. $202,60, 10% to the chamber contingent upon such funds being expended by December 1, 2020, to provide grants to individuals facing economic hardship, to allow them to pay their utility fees, and therefore continue to receive essential services. That the chambers' portion of the CARES Act funds be distributed and appropriated to the chamber...
I'm sorry. I know that this is complicated, but I think it needs to be stated, the amount, that the $1,298 appropriation, because there's two separate appropriations to the chamber and they have separate strings attached to them.
It would be the motion on the cover sheet that was on the dais and not in your packet.
Okay.
Well, no, that part didn't change. I think that's just that a number was skipped. So maybe if that bullet could be restarted...
Oh, okay. That number was out. I was reading what was in the book instead of, okay, I've got it now.
Got it.
Okay, so I start there. That the $1,1,298 appropriation to the chamber be distributed and appropriated to the chamber contingent upon the chamber using such funds by December 1, 2020 for support for expenses by eligible local small businesses and local nonprofit organizations with locations outside of the towns, good, that's gracious, corporate limits with expenses, which expenses are reimbursable under the CARES Act. The chamber providing documentation to the county sufficient to prove that such expenditures are reimbursable. The chamber signing a written agreement specifying and accepting the terms of such appropriation as stated herein and such other terms as may be required by the deputy emergency coordinator and consultant with the county attorney, including, without limitation, terms specifying business eligibility, and that the chamber comply with all other applicable laws, United States Treasury guidance, and county requirements concerning the expenditure of the funds, including but not limited to requirements that will specify the timeline for the submission of such documentation by the chamber, as all determined by the deputy emergency coordinator in consultation with the county attorney. That the $202,60 appropriation to the chamber and the first round distribution of $212,760 be distributed and appropriated to the chamber continued upon the chamber complying with all of the requirements applicable to the $1,1,298 appropriation and further contingent upon such funds being used to provide grants to individuals facing economic hardships to allow them to pay their utility fees and thereby continue to receive essential utility services. That the town's portion of all CARES Act funding, including both the first and second round of funding, in the total amount of $2,478,116, be distributed and appropriated to the town contingent upon the town using such funds for expenditures that are reimbursable under the CARES Act, upon the town providing documentation to the county sufficient to prove that such expenditures are reimbursable, upon the town signing a written agreement specifying and accepting the terms of such appropriation as stated herein and such other terms as may be required by the county. terms as may be required by the Deputy Emergency Coordinator in consultation with the County Attorney, and that the Town comply with all other applicable laws and county requirements concerning the expenditure of the funds, including but not limited to requirements that will specify the timeline for the submission and of such documentation by the Town, all determined by the Deputy Emergency Coordinator in consult, in consultation with the County Attorney."
Do I have a second?
I have a second. I'd just like to have one question, though.
Yes, sir.
That attorney, does all of this look okay? Mr. Hammond?
Yes, Rick and I drafted that. There is a lot of legalese and complication to this, because we want to make sure that when we are distributing this to the town and to the Chamber, you know, the way it works is that if there's a problem with the way they distributed it, then it comes back to the county, and the Commonwealth can use state aid intercept and take Warren County's money. So, we want to make sure that if there's a problem with the town distributing it incorrectly, or the Chamber distributing it incorrectly, that the county, as much as possible, is protected. And so, that is the reason for all the legalese.
So, our motion is, should be legal and binding?
Yes.
In all ways. So, I second the motion.
Mr. Sharaki, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next on our agenda is the authorization to accept 2019 Assistance to Firefighter Grants Award and Purchase of Accessory Equipment. Mrs. Rosser and Jerry?
Good evening again. I'm going to give you guys a very quick agenda item and a very short motion, so you won't have to read that again. On July 31, Warren County was notified that our application to FEMA's Assistant to Firefighters Grant Program was awarded funding for the purchase of 114 self-contained breathing apparatus. The county was awarded $725,454.55 in federal funding, with a local match of $72,545.45 being required. As presented at our last work session, Warren County Fire and Rescue is proposing that the county accept the funding utilizing Fire Programs funds, which are not local funds, to not only fund the local match, but also that of 13 rapid intervention packs and cylinders and eight tool adapters. Each of you should have a breakdown of that funding, but just a quick summary. The total cost for the SCBA and RED equipment is $843,783.36. Of that amount, $725,545.45 will be funded through the AFG Grant Program. And the amount funded by the Fire Programs Fund for both the local match and the additional equipment would be $118,283.81. So, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. Fire Marshal, Miadico, and Chief maybe are also present, if you should have any questions for them as well.
Well, I thought you guys did a wonderful job getting that grant. That was a blessing, and you guys did an awesome job. And then he somehow came back and scraped another $10,000 off, so thank you guys for your due diligence on that.
That's a win for the Fire Department and for the county. Do we have an additional, any additional questions or concerns?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors authorize the General Services Director to accept, on the behalf of the Warren County Department of Fire and Rescue Services, the 2019 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program award in the amount of $725,454. And that's, is that supposed to be 25 cents?
Yeah.
It's, okay, for the purchase?
Twenty-five and a half cents.
Well, that's what, I wondered if it was a typo, or, I like to round up.
I like five.
Twenty-five point five, for the purchase of 114 self-contained breathing apparatus units, and approve the expenditure of $118,283.81 of Fire Programs funds to be used to, for the required matching funds for the grant and the purchasing of the 13 rapid intervention team packs, and 13 rapid entry team cylinders, and eight tool adapters.
Second.
Mrs. Sharaki, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. Y'all did a great job on this, guys.
Oh, thank you.
And Gerald's.
We heard anything on the other grant?
Not yet, it still says coming soon, summer of 2020.
Do they know it's almost fall?
It's FEMA.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, next on our agenda is the award of the contract for Northern Warren Volunteer Fire Station roof replacement. Mrs. Rosser, this is you again.
Yes, on July 29, 2020, the General Services Department received bids for the re-roofing of the North Warren Volunteer Fire Station. We received eight bids, with the low bidder being Met Construction Company of Winchester, with a bid of $105,000. Staff discussed the bids with the project architect and has chosen to move forward with the factory-formed metal roofing system, which was the base bid, over the site-formed standing metal roof, which was the alternate base bid. That decision was due, in fact, due to the fact that the factory-formed system carries a 20-year warranty, while the site-formed system only carries a two-year warranty. Aesthetically, the chances of the site-formed roof showing buckles are greater as well. This project is being funded from profers associated with the Blue Ridge Shadows Housing Development, so all required funding has already been collected, and no local money will be needed. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
So, no county dollars at all?
No, the funding's been collected over the last several years, so we have adequate funding to fund it 100%, including the contingency listed in the motion.
It certainly was a wide range of bids that came in, over 100,000.
It was, I think we've kind of found, when we posted on Eva, and we have contractors' bid from other areas of Virginia, that we do see a more varied pricing, because they're not familiar with our name.
And will be a county inspector to make sure that the, whoever receives this bid, we get the job that we're expected to have on that roof?
Yes, I'll have my project manager on it, along with the Building Inspections Department will both be involved.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve a contract in the amount of $105,000 to Met Construction Company LLC for the re-roofing of North Warren Volunteer Fire Station, authorize the interim county administrator to execute the contract on the county's behalf. I further move that funding for the project include 5% for $5,250 for contingency be appropriated as outlined.
Second.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Sharaki, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Next on our agenda is the general public comment period, 15-minute time limit. This is for the public to give input on relevant issues in the community which are not on this agenda. Mrs. Sharaki, do we have people signed up?
You know, Mr. Chairman, we do have a few signed up, yes. First up is Ned Farrenhold.
Mrs. Sharaki, how many people are signed up?
Uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, unless there's anyone else signed up on that sheet. Ms. Ravis, is there anyone else signed up on that sheet? No? 24 individuals, which can't be easily divided into 15 minutes.
Yeah, we can't get 15 minutes.
We didn't use all 45 minutes in the earlier public comment period. Didn't we use some of that time, reappropriate that time to allow for more people to speak?
No, I'm sorry. Do, okay, I have a question.
I have a suggestion, if I may. We briefly discussed it, if all sides are agreeable, that are here about the statute discussion, maybe you all say that you will schedule a public hearing, so that we could, you know, discuss that and have the time to do that?
As we discussed briefly, the Board's got to, if we're going to do that, the Board is going to have to basically sit down together, and we'll put it on a, an agenda to where we can actually talk about it, to decide that. And we'll have to pick, we'll have to pick a day. Yeah, we'll have to pick a day, so everybody can get their hour of glory, or hour of speaking, either side. I'm happy to do that, and if, Mr. Daley, do you have a concern with that?
Suggestion, sir, that this be a forum.
Yes, sir.
A public forum held at a site that is large enough for people to come. The audience really is the public, the voter, at this point, and so that this be held at a place where everyone can address the voters, and, because the Board's not going to be considering this until after the referendum.
That's correct.
And so, we would arrange something probably October, which would be closer to the election, so that it would be fresh for people to consider it at that time, and in a larger site than this.
Mr. Medics?
Yes, sir.
Board, just please, for the other side, and this, this side to relocate, the side to keep it there, just make sure that, you know, I'm sure we all want to speak about it pretty, pretty soon, so just don't delay, because both sides definitely want to make sure that they're heard, and I just want, on behalf of both sides, make sure that you do not delay in creating a forum spot. Both sides need to be heard.
It's like two and a half hours for this opportunity. It would be sad if the board delayed yet further.
Yeah.
If you don't want.
Do we have a spokesman on both sides?
Mr. Porter?
So, we have a spokesman for?
We have a spokesman for Mr. Porter. Do we have an opposing point of view?
Mr. Colt.
Okay. How about, how about we let two people speak, and then we allow the people that are sitting in this room to just make us aware that you're talking, that you're agreeing with them. We can listen to everybody, but it would take forever to do that, and I appreciate that.
So, we have a couple people that would like to speak this evening, if possible.
I'm sorry?
We have a few people that would like to speak this evening on this subject. We've got to sit here all evening.
To be fair, we would, if we're having somebody that's agreeing to it, we need to have somebody that's disagreeing to it, to keep things fair, because we're, we are the impartial group right now.
I understand that.
Okay, if y'all, if everyone is okay.
I'm sorry, but she deserves to be heard, too. I think that we all deserve to be heard.
I think you should.
We've almost been sitting here all evening.
Yes. Wait a minute.
Do we have a two-minute call-in for each person, because it's fairly early, and because you can ask two minutes strictly?
Well, it's fairly early for y'all, we've got a session after this. Now, I'm not, I'm not, that is not an excuse, I promise you it's not, but.
How about a show of hands?
A show of hands, a show of hands of what, sir?
Whether you're opposed or for it.
Well, I, beings of, people have sat here, and they would like to be heard, we've got 15 minutes to play with. So, let's get a couple of people from both sides to talk about it.
You've got a great idea, you've got a good idea. You're early, select, let them speak first.
We'll speak last, you got it first, sir.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and not good.
Not everybody is here to speak about the monument, some of us have been sitting for two hours, north, south, and the health.
We understand.
Do you consider that in your 15-minute limit? It's not just these two people.
That's why we're talking about, that's why we're talking about two or three minutes. You can say Gettysburg Address was done in less than two minutes. I mean, we can say a whole lot, just to, just to say that you're for or against. I get that, and I want to be able to be fair to anybody else that wants to speak about anything different. So, we'll work it out together, promise we will. Hey, Dale, how are you?
Very good, yourself?
I'm doing well, thank you. Okay. Dale, I agree with you, and I understand your position. You can speak first, but there's going to be somebody right after you to speak.
That's fine.
And you've got about two minutes, three minutes max.
I called down to find out what the situation was.
Could we get you to the, could we get you the?
I have a prepared document.
Could we get you up front, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Scratch my name off the list, I'll talk another time.
Okay, thank you.
I have a prepared text here, because I wanted to make sure there was no misunderstanding. Each of you supervisors have a, have a copy of the prepared text.
And you have, you have supplemental data there that verifies everything I would say.
I made the prepared text, so it did not run over five minutes. I can speed it up, but I doubt if I can do it less than four. So, I'm going to do my best to get it down to four.
You can do that, and Dale, I know who you are, but I don't know that everybody knows who you are, could you say your name?
My name is Dale Carpenter, I live on Lena Court in Front Royal. Just by way of, I'm from a Yankee from New England. We've been, to make this short, we live in Front Royal, my wife and I, because we want to live in Front Royal. And Front Royal is an exceptional town with a ton of history, good and bad, depending on your perspective, and until recently, has been a peaceful town with an enviable future for all citizens, regardless of race or gender, and on a trajectory of being one of the finest in the Commonwealth, if not the nation. This town should not be defrauded, misled, or confused by the language used by totalitarian Marxist organizers, agitators, or their unknowing or complicit supporters. To misread or to unwittingly accept their mischaracterization of an issue or an event is to open the floodgates for ever-increasing demands for appeasement, compromise, and finally surrender. Who are the main internal threats today to our God-given, unalienable rights as citizens of a nation ruled by law? Laws are founders based on biblical values, and what should we do when these laws are challenged and subjected to destruction? The two most immediate internal threats to our nation today are the cultural Marxist organizations of Antifa and Black Lives Matter. A secondary but significant threat is the woke enablers of these Marxist groups in our federal, state, and local government, in our government-run educational institutions, and the large number of corporate institutions that are frequently dominated by corporate leaders and corporate policies that benefit from supporting woke causes. Should the citizens of Front Royal, Warren County be concerned? In Front Royal, Warren County?
Dale, could you, could you summarize the rest of it, please? I mean, we're trying to get to everybody tonight, and I appreciate what you're saying, we're reading it, and we've got it available to us. I appreciate it.
Well, I figure this might happen, and so I will step down, but I don't, I don't appreciate it, because I've waited my turn both last, you fast-tracked this issue onto the, onto the agenda without notice to anybody that could comment at the time. No way, you've now made a decision based on appeasement. If I told you I'm a Yankee, and I had three families in State College, Pennsylvania, 17 kids were killed in Gettysburg, they were slaughtered by the rebels.
Dale, 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 that's enough, please.
Well.
I'm happy to talk, I'll come visit you and talk to you, you could talk a blue streak to.
You fast-tracked, you fast-tracked an issue, you now have created an issue.
Your time is up, Dale.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to speak next?
Well, there's a list, I thought.
Well, there is a list, but we've got to get somebody that represents a group of people. Mr. Young, are you ready?
So, if I call your name, and you would rather be spoken about through a representative, please just indicate as such, and I will move to the next name. So, I know that Mr. Porter is representing one side, is there, general, Mr., what is your name?
Colter, Bruce Colter.
Bruce Colter. So, we have Bruce Colter for one, and then Mr. Porter for the other, so if I, I'm sorry? Oh, my apologies, Colton. So, if I call your name, and you would rather be spoken about or through by one of those gentlemen, just let me know. Penny Smith? I'm sorry, repeat that? I'm sorry, repeat that?
Penny Smith, 101 Nut Hatch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I want to be really brief because I want to respect that time and respect the people here. I know the issue before us is the statue, so I'll make bullet points, hopefully one minute. My first bullet point is, we're in a polarizing time. We're in a very hard time. The division in our country, coronavirus, financial distress is to the max. We're also in a time where racial relationships is front and center for conversation. So my desire for Front Royal is that we would go through this well, that we would go through this listening to each other. Everyone has views. Everyone's view is important. Both sides are important. I was so impressed to read the, the thought to have a question on the ballot because it's simply a way to get people's input. And I really was impressed with that. But I want to respect the time. My bullets are, when we feel threatened, it's easy to lash out. It's easy to defend our own position. We're at risk to become polarized. We're at risk for violence. And so my hope is that we would come through this together. And my suggestion is that we consider things like public forums, that we consider things like clergy in the community, attorneys, policemen, social workers, and we ask them, what do you think? And I want to point out the obvious, that the black voice has been missing for generations. We've told them what to do, but we haven't listened to them. A monument.
Could you sum up for me, please?
Yes, I'll sum up. Gave my last point, gave that point. Just that we come together and listen, and that we don't be railroaded, and that you as a, as a leaders, don't be railroaded. And listen, especially to the black voice. Listen, don't throw your stones, just be open.
Dale Orlowsky?
Yes, I'm Daryl Lesky from 146 Hookah Point Lane, London, Virginia. I have furnished a letter to your clerk here, and basically it's a list of violations of law from property owners of Shenandoah Farms Incorporated, Shenandoah Farms Sanitary District, and Warren County. With these, I'm requesting that POSF Incorporated be immediately removed from the advisory board to sanitary district under State Code sixty-three point two S three oh five. Also violations of the contract, also violations of the court order issued by the judge that established the sanitary district. The sixty-three point two three oh five says that they have two term limitations of four years each, no more. They've been there for ten years. They exceeded their term by two years. I also asked you to defund them. Currently under State Statute eighteen point two dash one twelve in the Schuster Public Assets and U.S. Code eighteen, U.S. Code six forty-one. Currently, so the Shenandoah Farms is being funded to maintain properties that are deeded in their names, they're their properties. They are using taxpayer money. This would be the same as you going ahead and giving taxpayer money to Salvation Army to maintain their own properties. This is misuse of our money. Thank you.
Nancy Nguyen?
The comments that I have. I'm here to appeal to the board of supervisors on creating a new property owner community-based advisory committee to the Shenandoah Farms sanitation district. I'm also asking the county to further consider correction. POSF, Inc. is not a property owners association. Any and all reference that POSF, Inc. is a POA that is listed on the Warren County website needs to be removed. This is false, misleading information to all prospective property owners and to all current Shenandoah Farms subdivision property owners. It is important that I publicly advise the board of supervisors on my next statement. POS is not following Warren County contracting procedures. I won't list all of those because I'm going to cut them into little for you. I've asked POSF for financial documentation or copies of check registers. POS refuses, stating they are a private nonprofit and are not subject to FOIA for their attorney. I have an email to that effect. POSF entered into a contract with Warren County, and on page nine, paragraph twenty-seven, it says, records and financial information concerning matters related to the sanitary district shall be made available to any property owner that asks. So they're clearly in violation, and that was also in the court order. So they're in violation of the court order as well. In my FOIA discoveries, well, that's good. I'm giving this to Walter because this is the evidence and the up, what I FOIA on some issues of taxpayer money by property owners of Shenandoah Farms. And that's for you to share, Walter, with her.
We'll make that charitable.
What do you have, Walter?
I will defer.
You want to defer, okay. Next is John Terman.
I defer to Mr. Porter.
Stevie Hubbard?
I'm going to allow my daughter to go ahead and speak in my place.
I came to speak today regarding the statue.
Ma'am, I hate to interrupt your name and address.
Cameron Hubbard, eleven sixty-nine Elm Street.
Thank you.
I came here today to speak regarding the statue because I feel like you guys haven't heard it from my perspective and my generation. But I feel it's really important, too. By accepting these positions, you guys are taking a role on to the community's sake and to make sure we're all happy and feel comfortable. For all races, religions, ethnicities, et cetera, I know you decide to let the public vote on standing or the voting of the statue. But to me and all my friends and people my age, it feels like you guys don't care about us, or you don't take it into our consideration how we feel. If we continue to remove said statues, then we are deciding to repeat itself over and over and over again. This town will not grow to be a town that everyone feels welcome in if we keep continuing to keep this the way it is. As someone who is actively in school, you can't, I can't even begin to list all the racial stories that I hear, and ninety-five percent of them are borrowed out of Confederacy and heritage. If you would ask me seven months ago how I felt about this town, and I come from Fairfax, I would have told you that there was no place I would ever rather be. I love this town so much. But if you ask me now, I would rather move back. I don't feel comfortable where I live. I feel like I'm constantly degraded by the way that I look. I feel like I'm not accepted by my town. Every time I walk down our main street, I'm constantly reminded by a racist statue, which it is to be read to the UDC. So I feel like you guys should take that into consideration about how everyone feels.
Reverend Valerie Hayes?
Good evening. My name's Valerie Hayes. I live at seventy-eight Summit Manor Drive. I'm just going to speak briefly. I've been here before. To remind us all, and many people are familiar with the musical Hamilton, and so we know about the Federalist Papers. Madison wrote number ten, in which he wrote, and which we remember, that in part the function of a democracy and of our elected, elected leaders is that they speak for the minority. That they sit in a place of leadership to protect those who do not have a voice. I continue to come from a place of my faith and the baptismal covenant and my Episcopal tradition in which we seek and serve Christ in all persons, loving our neighbor as ourselves, that we strive for justice and peace and to respect the dignity of every human being. The presence of a Confederate monument on the grounds of our courthouse and our circuit court is against those beliefs. I understand that it honors those who died, that they died in a war that was fought for the rights of some to enslave other human beings. And so it is fundamentally a continuing symbol of racism and racial hatred, and that some people had no freedom. I also agree to the relocation of a monument to an appropriate place in our community to honor the dead and those families and that history. But I continue to uphold that it has no place on the lawn that is meant to be a place of justice for all persons. And that as a democracy, we are obligated to listen to the voices of the minority.
Laura Cascada?
I'm here with Samuel Porter.
Okay. Noel Williams?
I'm here with David Porter.
Mr. Bruce Colton?
My name is Bruce Colton. I live at five five eight Oakley Mountain Road, Brown Town, Virginia. I need the chairman and board. For the record, I am here to support leaving the monument where it is on the courthouse lawn. Why? Why, why do I want to do this? Because it was erected and dedicated to honor the citizens, citizens of Warren County who became soldiers and fought in the war between the states. Over six hundred of them. Many of them were killed and never returned home. Those soldiers fought to defend their families and their homes from the invading army. The monument we're speaking of has an inscription on the north side of it that states its purpose. It is there to honor the veterans. It has no mention of hatred or slavery anywhere inscribed on that monument. I'm a veteran. I'm sure there are many other veterans in this room. For myself, I spent part of nineteen sixty-seven, nineteen sixty-eight in Vietnam with the Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division. I belong to the veterans of foreign wars. I belong to the American Legion. Those organizations are all about equality. There is no room for racism in any of our army forces and in those organizations. I want to point out that the monument that we're talking about is on the same lawn as our other veterans' memorials. Along with that, there are two Medal of Honor recipients that are on there. I'm very proud of that. I'm born in Warren County. I'm sure that I will probably expire here. I am proud that Warren County has produced two Medal of Honor recipients. My feeling is, and I'm along with a lot of other people, that this monument is removed as the gentleman that preceded me on said, it's just a step. The next step will be the removal of the World War One, the World War Two, the Korea, the Vietnam memorials.
Could you sum up, please?
Yes, I'm just about to wrap up.
Appreciate it.
That's, that's what's coming. That's what, that's what's going to be asked for next, is to remove all that. This is not what America's about, not what, not what it stands for. If you don't appreciate and honor our veterans, who do you appreciate? They protect our way of life. I ask you to please leave the monument where it is. Thank you, thank you, one of all.
Sergeant Mr. May, we've been keeping time back here, and we noticed whoever's keeping time down there, people that are speaking on our behalf, are giving a minute and thirty seconds, and you're giving them too. And we're clocking it ourselves back here, so please keep it there.
I'd also like to add, Mr. May, that everybody can be quiet while everybody is speaking. Some of us could hear.
Thank you.
Mrs. Chirraki, who am I?
Oh, yes, Scott Jenkins?
Scott Jenkins, three four seven one Re Mountain Road. My wife Lisa and I operate Mountain Home Bed and Breakfast. At Mountain Home, we strongly believe that all people are welcome and everyone deserves respect and hospitality. And we practice those values every day. Warren County tourism depends on our entire community being welcoming and hospitable. Symbols of division and intimidation have no place in our public spaces.
Sam Saber?
Hi, Sam Saber, Mindy Drive. Thank you all for staying so late. I'm here in further support of the investigation into the property owners of Shenandoah Farms, Inc. As a relatively recent transplant here, it's absurd the level of secrecy surrounding our organization for the property owners who live here. Transparency is of utmost importance, and until recently, access to the documents themselves about what exactly pertains to Warren County versus POSF, Inc. versus otherwise were extremely difficult to find. I was not provided upon purchase of my property. Excuse me. And still many documents have yet to be added to the elementary-level online database that was just only recently released. We, the individuals who own the property there, have a right to be involved directly. And I'm here to say specifically that I'm interested and I will be involved in any advisory committee's forum on its behalf. I'm paying attention, my neighbors are paying attention. We've all had the absolute pleasure of watching the co-main legal fraud within Warren County be exposed shortly after I moved here and within the last couple of years. My tax dollars are not going to be misused, and you, as the board of supervisors, should provide us the transparency and independence we deserve and the oversight of our community. Thank you.
Mrs. Chirraki, anyone else?
Jeanne Anderson, but I believe she might have left.
I think she left.
Yeah, and then Mr. Gabbert Scott, I scratched your name, which has requested, Samuel Porter?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here. I know it's a little late. I like to just make sure I stay focused on the message and not the man. But again, I'm also a veteran of the United States military, the Navy. Good old Navy. I'm retired, actually. And so veterans, there are some like me that think that that statue should be relocated to a better place. Also, do you know that Secretary of Defense, Mr. Esper, has made it so Confederate flags are not allowed on military bases? So if we want to talk about what the military and what veterans stand for, I think we should be mindful of that, because that's, that's actually facts. America is a great country, though. I know that from being a veteran. America is a great country. But America is a country that was founded on the premises of white supremacy and white superiority. You've heard in this debate heritage, hate, slavery, and southern culture. You've heard that they're celebrating their history, they're celebrating their culture, they're celebrating their southern pride. People have understood these code words for a very long time. And so let's not shy away from what these things actually stand for and what these things actually mean. I'm very disappointed in Mr. Carter doing what he did with the referendum, and then we have an unanimous decision to do it that way. To me, it's like we're kicking the can down the road. But I respect you all because it's a nonviolent referendum. So I know that if I'm able to get, to have these forums and talk, you're able to maybe understand me better and where I'm coming from. Because I don't think that Mr. Fox, Ms. Holars, or Mr. May, you'll ever understand what it's like to be me in America because you don't look like me on the outside. I wish I could agree with you that, hey, we are just a human race. But sir, ma'am, sir, respectfully, it's just not the way it is when I walk outside. It's just not the way it is. I wish I could say that and agree with you. These monuments, again, were put up during two different periods. One period was like the late eighteen fifty, uh, the late eighteen hundreds to the early nineteen twenties. I'd like for you to look at that history, look what was going on in our country. Legends of black people, a hundred and twelve this year, eighty-five the next year, fifty-seven, fifty-six, respectively. These black people were being killed just for being black. Make sure you look at the history and understand what that statue really stands for. Because I promise you, once you get into the nitty and gritty, if you, if you have a heart, you wouldn't support it being there, you would be located as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Name's Roger Smith, 64th and Arrow Road, Front Royal, Virginia. I don't know if I can get my point across with the short time I have, but I came here tonight because of the parks along the Shenandoah River and Shenandoah Farms. I know the one at Low Water Bridge was just approved and is going to be built. Myers is already built and complete and being used, but we need to put a system in at Low Water Bridge when that park is built for people to understand how long it takes to go from Low Water Bridge to Myers or to Route 50 even. Already this year, I've taken three families home that came off the river in the dark. Very dangerous. Mr. May, I've talked to you about this already once. A marking, a map, a marking system, I'd be willing to put one on my property. I'd be willing to be an emergency exit point. We have to put something in place, not only on our end of the river, but it should be everywhere up the river. So as that park is being, you know, constructed and undergoing, please try to fit something in the budget to put a mapping system and a marking system down the river. And I'd be happy to come back when, have a little bit more time, because I do have a lot of ideas, but I think some other people have other things to say as well.
Happy to talk with you about that anytime you want to talk about it, because that's up there in my district, and I'm concerned about that as well.
And we've spoken briefly about it, but I don't know, I'm not familiar with the, how things are done, or who I need to talk to, or if we can get a committee involved, or whatever you guys need to help me with that part, if please.
Sheriff's officers would have to agree with him.
Yeah. And you guys have a boat, and I almost, you know, I never see it on my end of the river.
We actually don't have a boat anymore.
Oh, you don't? We need to get a boat.
But we rescue.
Thank you very much. So I know the fire departments have boats, and most of the time, they're sitting there. Get these guys out and do some training, maybe take the sheriff's deputy along with them, you know, to not only learn the river, because, you know, and then the animal wardens, you know, it's their responsibility when somebody drowns. And unfortunately, we've had a lot of that, and I think a little bit could go a long way to save lives.
I gave you my card. Call me whenever you're ready. I'm happy to come up and visit or meet someplace and we'll talk about it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Getting ready to get started.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Jean Philby?
I will defer to...
We gotta go. I have a big... You don't want to see me. I'm going to take your apology.
Jean Philby, 836 Shenandoah Shores Road, from Royal, Virginia. I'm going to be brief, because I think that Sam has covered everything that I had on my mind tonight, because it's a Samo story. I ask this Board of Supervisors to do the right thing and move this statue from the House of Justice. We do not need a symbol of hate and injustice in front of the House of Justice. The reasons that these statues were erected in the first place was to enforce racial segregation. The United Daughters of the Confederacy, a white Southern women's heritage group, was founded in 1864, 30 years after the Civil War. The members aspired to transform military defeat into a political and cultural victory, where states' rights and white supremacy remained intact. Is Front Royal and Warren County a place where white supremacy remains intact? I don't think that that's the image that you all are going to present in the year of 2020. Even without the right to vote, the group was extremely influential. They lobbied local governments to erect memorials for the Confederacy, and that's what we are dealing with today. Many cities and towns have made the decision to remove these statues. So I ask you again, Warren County Board of Supervisors, do the right thing. Just do the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. Dale? We've well exceeded our 15-minute time period.
Approximately, real close to 45 minutes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to end the general comment period.
I didn't get to talk, and I'm not talking about the statue. I signed up.
Linda, I understand. Please come up. If you're not talking about the statue, we should... No, I'm talking to everybody. If you're not talking about the statue, you're more than welcome to speak. Thank you for inviting, Linda.
I want to present this to the Board of Supervisors. It's some files that I've had. My name's Lynn McDonald, 1205 Potters Road. And I just wanted to present here that these are Shenandoah Farms property owners of when I was on the boards, all the pages from 2008 to 2013. I was involved, and I was on the board, and that was that. And then this here is the Warren County Board of Supervisors meetings that I've been to through all these years. I'm trying to get you guys this information, which now I'm going to send in for the second time, and it starts out on 2000, which your booklet will have, which I hope you'll look at, and I'll give you other dates to look at. This is April 10, 2009, with a letter my husband wrote to the newspaper about raising our taxes. This one here is May 17, 2009, about the Board of Supervisors and about Shenandoah Farms and about road revenues. We have signatures on here. Here's another one. We got 50 signatures on here, because we didn't want some of roads done and everything. What did they do? They threw masas. Here's another one from the property owner that you guys have, and it does state all different types of stuff and everything. And then I know that we've brought up the cash cow. Here's the cash cow that we came in in 2010 with this information. And also here is our corporation, that we are not a POA, have never been a POA. We are a corporation. And so I'm hoping that you will look through those documents, refer back to the past, because we just have somebody speaking here now, bringing up all this information again. And this is 10, 11 years later. We also requested that POSF Board not be the advisory board. It's all in those documents that I just presented with you. And it's not just a group of people. It's a whole lot of us that have been here time and time again. I know Mr. Fox was here at the time, Mr. Carter was here at the time, and I know that the three new supervisors are new. But, and you can imagine, after all these years, somebody always taught me, keep paper trail. It works out really well, and we just keep a paper trail. So I just really appreciate it if you guys would listen to us, realize that we know our community, and that we, you know, want either a new advisory board, we want things to be changed, we really like POSFing to go bankrupt like it should have done in 1996 when you made it a sanitary district, because they should have just let it go, and it could have been recreated, and then maybe we wouldn't be having these problems. But thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak about anything else? Just a second. I've got one more ahead of you.
Thank you, Mr. May and Supervisors. My name is Ralph Rinaldi. I live at 4725 Halsfeld Road, Front Royal, Virginia. I am currently the Chairman of Property Owners of Shenandoah Farms. I suggest that you read the documents that have been handed to you today by the three speakers that have come forward. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact us. Don't want to take up all your time tonight about it, on the he-said, she-said idea. And that's all I'm going to say about that. I do support the idea of the river information, and we too have had people coming out onto our common property boat ramps that we have, Treasure Island up in the main one. The situation that I've seen down there is pretty great. I helped some people out myself, and they were exhausted, sunburned, et cetera. And they put in at Morgan Ford, and I pulled them out at Treasure Island. So it is a problem. So anything that can be done so that people can look at a monument or a pole or something, and they say, okay, under normal circumstances, it should take us three hours to get to, you know, wherever. Well, I heard the bell rings, so I guess I'll honor that. So you know what I'm saying about that, Mr. May? I'd be glad for Shenandoah Farms to assist in that situation with the river, too. And please call me about some of the issues that have been brought up here, about Shenandoah Farms not being transparent, et cetera, et cetera. I'd be happy to answer those, and I think you'll be very satisfied with the answers. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir. And you will be our last.
Oh, okay. Same, but that's the last.
Okay, we've got one more after you.
Tim Ray, 6079 Stonewall Backs and Highway. I have a feeling that angle will change in some time, and I would like to recommend a name, since the Red Bud always comes out so beautiful on the highway. If it comes to changing the name, I'd like to recommend Red Bud Highway, because it is a hotspot. But that's not what I'm originally up here for. A few weeks ago, I presented the Board of Supervisors with the support of our law enforcement signs with the Front Royal Police Department and Sheriff Department. I want to give you just a little update as to what's been going on. Some of you may already know, if you follow Facebook. We have recently created a Facebook group called Warren County Front Royal Back Blue. That group has been in existence for just a little under 10 weeks. We have 260 members. We have been endorsed by the Paternal Order of Police, the Warren County Front Royal Casters. They have also given us a substantial donation that will enable us to print some more signs and to also add some corporate stickers as well. Real quick, if I may, we have great news that on September 1, we will be holding a law enforcement appreciation parade. Now, if you need more information, you can go to the Facebook page. We'll also be sending out a press release at some point. So I just wanted to give you a little update on that. Thank you.
We've got one more? Yes, sir.
Sam Horn, 301 Royal Fort Road. Basically, I just came in to give you a real quick rundown, because I've had a few of the Board of Supervisor members ask me to keep them informed of what the local militia that's being put together was doing. We've actually divided into three separate subcategories. We are working on getting a 501(c) set up right now for food donations. The reason being is because there are so many of us in the county now that we have started a bank account to be able to purchase a piece of land for a community garden. There's a lot of things going on as far as what we're trying to organize, and one of the biggest things that I wanted to let you all know about tonight was, on the 22nd this coming Saturday, we have rented BMW and are having an open militia call for the entire county at this point. It'll be 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and the address is 1847 North Royal Avenue, for those who didn't know where it was. Outside of that, that was pretty much it. And is there any questions or anything?
Thank you. With that being said, anyone else? Final call. The public comment period is now closed. Did Dr. Reed sense his close session?
I move the Board into a closed meeting under provisions of Sections 2.3, 2.237, 1-1, A-7, and A-8 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation and the provision of legal advice regarding the industrial development authority of the town of Front Royal and the county of Warren, Virginia, the EDA, the town of Front Royal, the EDA versus Jennifer McDonald et al., and town of Front Royal versus the EDA et al., and other potential claims and litigations relating to other possible liabilities of the EDA and the recovery of EDA funds and assets.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.